Thank you, everybody. It's 6 o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. This is our informational meeting for the main 20th Annual Meeting, but we're going to go through our regular board meeting, public comment.
Well, Beth, I would suggest we do the informational meeting.
Okay.
Let Lori explain the budget.
Great.
Let have any informational questions on the budget. Let that just kind of have it happen.
Great. Okay, so Lori, do you want to start?
I'd be happy to. So do you want to give me sharing capabilities?
You got it. There you go.
Okay, hold on.
Uh, Michael Pelton has joined.
Okay.
Okay, can every, can everybody see the documents that were sent on in the board document packet?
So the people on Zoom can see it and the people in the audience have hard copies.
Okay. Perfect. All right, so this is the summary of the budget. This fiscal year 24 proposed budget presented reflects one teacher and one teaching principal, a .5 admin assistant, a part-time bus driver, and custodian are the main employees of this budget. Let's see, also reflected in this budget is the food service program that is running currently, that is currently unbudgeted for, but is budgeted for for next year. And also a $10,000 contribution towards the capital fund. So those are the main pieces of this budget, as well as the other itinerant staff that serve Wyndham School.
Uh, Lori, I had a question before you got on.
Okay.
Does this, um, does the four, the 47869, that's the number that the board voted on, does that include, uh, any tuition payments that are predicted for next year?
It does. It, it also includes a 504 student tuition.
Thank you.
And it's 47869 is the total for the budget. The board also determined to use $30,000 of the $80,000 fund balance to reduce the tax rate slightly. As you can see, the, after the CLA, the tax rate is projected to be $2.14 versus $2.17 there, with and without the surplus. So I'm happy to take any questions on any individual lines that somebody might have. Can go ahead and make that a little bigger there.
Lori, I have a question for you on a, um, one of the documents that you prepared that stated April 11th, 2023, under the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget, it came up to 479, 464. And I see that's different than the 476, 694. And I'm wondering why there's, why is one 479, 464, and the other one 476, 694?
Um, I'm sure it was, yeah, just some adjustments. This is the, the number that the board approved. So this is the approved budget that the board approved back last month, I think it was.
Okay.
So there was probably just some adjustments made between versions.
I, I'm pretty sure, I, I'm pretty sure that, I thought that was the number and that's what I wrote. And then I was told by the auditors, I think, and Russ, you also mentioned that that was wrong. And I know that, that I, that's what I wrote down. I, I, I can sometimes be dyslexic, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what I had written. So that's great. Thank you, Lori. So I don't know what that means for our warning, because I think the warning says something different.
It's, it's close enough. I mean, it's just, it's a small difference. But I was just looking at this April 11th, 2023 proposal that you had made. And that's where I saw the 479 number. That's all.
Well, and I would remind the board that since you guys have a live meeting, you, at the live meeting, the moderator can allow for amendments.
Okay.
And an amendment can be made to make the number that the public will vote on, that 47869. Uh, this is why a lot of towns like to have live meetings, so that when changes are made right before the meeting or in between the time period of approving the budget, that you have the ability to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, sorry, Lori.
Uh, that's okay. I'm sorry for the confusion. I, this is the number that I presented the last time that you voted on, so.
Nope, I, actually makes me feel a lot better, because I thought I was going nuts. No, no, that's, that's good news.
Okay, so here is the detailed budget that is revised from the first draft that was presented. And, uh, you know, as you can see, the, you'll see that the revenues and the expenses don't exactly match. And that is because of that $30,000 of fund balance that's being added from, from the fund balance. So is there any questions on the revenues? The top part is the revenues. We have local revenues, which is the transportation, and also some interest. There's also, so that transportation is from West River to transport the secondary students using the Wyndham bus. The transportation sub grant is money that comes in from the state. It offsets the total cost of transportation. Your ed spending, which is just the calculation of expenses minus, uh, or revenues minus expenses. And then still receiving the small schools grant for the last year there.
I have another question for you, Lori.
Okay.
Back when we were discussing the budgets, we had looked at several different alternatives. And one of them was, um, sending the students to another school as a school choice budget. And that came in at $420,000. And I'm assuming that assumption was sending them down to Townsend with a tuition payment to the Townsend District. And that's a situation where we would have eight teachers at the elementary school and nine support staff, as opposed to just one teacher and a teaching principal here in Wyndham. And the kids would get a much better education. Do you think this is something that the townspeople ought to consider as an alternative to the keeping the school open and operating it?
Uh, so I'll jump in there and just say that our job is to prepare a budget that the board votes upon, which you have done. And then you guys get to have a live meeting of which you can discuss anything on the warning or any other business that comes before the meeting. So I would think that the appropriate time to discuss anything other than what the board has voted on would probably be on Saturday. But that is simply my, um, uh, opinion, uh, that I've shared with other boards.
Well, my concern is back in 2021, they voted a budget of $535,000. And then that was turned down at the town meeting. And they later came back with a budget for $408,000. And I think the voters of Wyndham are entitled to know that there is an alternative to keeping the school open that would cost $58,000 less. And I think it's something that the people, the voters of Wyndham should have an opportunity to vote on, not have it rammed down their throats that this is the only budget we're going to consider.
Are you talking about this is the only budget? Sorry, Bill, real quick, that this budget compared to the one that sends the kids out of town?
Yes.
But that's exactly what we're doing, Russ, on Saturday. That's town meeting. That's democracy. All we're doing is, as a board, setting the budget, setting policies. And then we put that out to the voters and that's their choice. Everybody gets their yea or their nay. I said it to you last night. No, no, no. And that's what we're deciding. We're not shoving anything down anybody's throats. This is not what, I don't get paid $750 a year to shove anything down anybody's throat. We're just, our job as a board is just to put forth the information. That's it. Period.
Part of the job of the board, according to the Vermont School Board's booklet, is to provide the education at a reasonable price. And what I'm seeing here is that this board and other boards in the past have taken the opportunity to show a budget to the public, but not giving them a choice in Plan A or Plan B. They just say, this is it. And I think that because the, the school boards say that the, um, the, the, the board has the opportunity to provide the best education at the most reasonable price. And I think that we can get a better education with eight teachers down in Townsend at $58,000 less. And that's, that's not being discussed or brought forth to the voters of Wyndham.
It has been brought forth many times. Yes.
No, it has not. This, this budget, this budget and this proposal is significantly different than any of the others.
Russ, we operate a school and that's what we're, we're presenting to the public. If they choose not to support it, then that's the way it goes. You're suggesting that you know how children should be educated. It's like me saying that I should decide how children. No, Russ, that's exactly what you do. It's not our decision. It's up to the public to make that decision. It's up to the parents to make that decision. That's it. Period. Bill, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, no, I just, I think you're all making excellent points. But under the law, the board has to vote a number, which you have done on April 18th. And then you have to bring that forward to the voters. But I think in the wisdom of the Wyndham community, you've done it in a way where you have a live meeting. So exactly what Russ is discussing has the opportunity to be discussed. But you, as a board, did have to give one number for the citizens to start their discussion on, whether they're going to approve that number, whether they're going to amend that number, whether they're going to discuss other things. So the board has done their job by presenting that number to the citizens. And on Saturday, the ability to discuss exactly what Russ is talking about will manifest itself.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other questions for Lori Garland? Lori Garland is our CFO. She's highly regarded in this, throughout the state. So again, we're just board members. We present a budget that comes from the help of Lori Garland and central office. We present policies that come through central office. So if you have questions, this is your time to ask. Crystal, is this based on one teacher, one teaching principal, and a half-time admin?
If it is.
Thank you. Thanks, Crystal. Anybody else? I don't see any hands raised. Oh, uh, Bill, Abby has.
No hands on Zoom.
Yeah, Abby has her phone right here, so she can help too. Thank you.
Oh, awesome.
Abby, is your phone volume all the way down?
Yes, but is it still giving feedback?
I feel like I'm hearing a little bit of feedback.
I'm trying to cover the speaker on here. I'm not sure how.
I had muted yourself on Zoom.
But it's still like, oh, yes. Wait a minute. I think I.
That's up to you if you can do it.
Is it helpful?
Sure. I mean, it might be for people on the computer. It is, so I can't help. Okay, still no. Hands raised in Zoom land. Uh, Bridget Corby, the administrative assistant, is going to try and set up a laptop that might help. But otherwise, I don't want to keep Lori if, if there's no other questions, but I just, this, this is the time, certainly.
Can I ask Lori a question?
Yeah.
Lori, this is John Beegan. Russ mentioned a budget that was $50,000 less than the one the school board has proposed. Do you have an idea what difference that would make on a Wyndham homeowner's property tax bill?
Well, I think that, yes, um, and there is very little difference in the tax rate. Um, I do think that there is more to discuss around that. But knowing that that is not the budget that's being presented tonight, this is the budget that's being presented tonight. You know, I think the question should be limited to the what's in front of you here. At another time, if the board so chooses, I can definitely, um, do that analysis live with, with everybody.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
We, we have a Zoom question. Michael Pelton.
Go ahead, Michael.
Lori, are you going to be available for questions at town meeting or are you occupied that day?
Lori will not be available on Saturday.
That's what this meeting is for. That's why.
The, the reason I bring that up is, the reason I bring that up is that, um, the tax rate may very well be a conversation on Saturday. So if we could have the information to compare the tax rate between the two budgets, the current proposed budget and the budget that Russ is trying to promote, it might be interesting for the voters to see.
Um, I would.
So we would need the board to direct us to provide that in paper copy and then we could do that.
Okay, do we want to do that? Ask Lori? What was the question, Michael, to, uh, show the different tax or the differences between the, could you repeat it?
A comparison of the, a comparison of the tax rate with the current proposed budget and in comparison with the budget that Russ is promoting.
I do think without, um, understanding it and going through it in a board meeting such as this, that, um, you know, it's, it's, you're comparing and there will be questions about it that I can't answer on Saturday. So I'm happy to do whatever the board wants me to do. But the board has not even seen the revised, because I, I understand the new weighting now better after going to a training a couple of weeks ago. So none of that's been discussed with the board.
Okay.
So just, I'm putting that out there is because you all are going to be the ones to, to represent both budgets, if that's the case.
And I would just remind you that you are presenting one budget. You can discuss anything you want. But your job, which you have done, was to present one budget to the board to predict, to discuss. And if it's the people's will at town meeting to receive that information at another board meeting, we can do that, but we, we can't be there Saturday.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Lori? Go ahead, Crystal.
I'm probably just blind, because this is really small. What is the full cost for the student that is tuitioned to Townsend? I know we didn't pay full cost this year.
$17,500.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have another question from Zoom. Maureen, Bill?
Yeah, go ahead, Maureen.
Thanks, Beth. Um, you know, I, I agree with Michael. I think it would be wise to have that tax rate information available, um, on Saturday, because I'm pretty sure the discussion is going to come up. And it would be, it would be helpful to have that info.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, but I'm seeing what Lori's saying, that, um, I'm worried about, nobody's going to really be able to speak to it since Lori and Bill aren't going to be there. I don't know. Would either of you, feel free to chime in.
Um, what, yeah, I mean, the reality is, is you, you're talking about, uh, so as it stands right now, Wyndham School District runs a school and is voting on a budget to run that school. Whatever you want to discuss on Saturday is fine, but nothing is changed legally in running a school. And your obligation as a board is to present a budget to run that school. It is absolutely appropriate to have whatever discussion you want. But your town meeting warning is about approving a budget for this school. Now, you just vote on a bottom line. And if you approve the $470,869 and subsequently there is a vote that closes the school, that $470,869 stays as an operating budget, no matter what the structure of the school is. So I can't imagine in an environment in where you would not vote a budget to operate the school on Saturday. And if things change, all that means is that you'll either have a surplus if it is cheaper to do something different, or you'll have a deficit if it is more expensive to do something different. But you can't predict that. All you can predict is that as of today and as of the 20th, in which you have your annual meeting, you are providing a budget for the citizens to vote on.
Uh, Maureen, are you, are you good with that?
Not really. You, you know, the discussion is going, you're, it's, it's very likely the discussion is going to happen. It would just behoove us to have that information available. You, you, Lori said she knows what the, the other budget is now. It might be different than the one that you talked about a month or two ago. But based on that bottom line of the other budget, I think.
I think the tax rate could be calculated, no?
So Bill, if, if things, if, if the budget were to be voted down, then this would just start all over. We would have another informational meeting where we would have you and Lori on board. Or maybe not you, because.
Right. Um, you, if you, if the budget does not pass on the 20th, it'll be the responsibility of the board to convene, to decide on a new budget, and to put that forward to the citizens. The discussion about operating or non-operating is later in your agenda, following the board's directive to seek legal counsel.
Oh, wow. Look at you. You're amazing.
Magic.
Thank you. Okay, um, I, I'm not really sure. I, um.
I think Maureen's point is, is regardless of Bill or Lori being available, she understands that the conversation is going to be wider than just this budget.
Sure.
And even though there can't be follow-up answers by myself or our CFO, I think Maureen's point is it could be valuable to have an estimate of what operating this, the school district in a different manner might look like, as long as that disclaimer is real. Not to speak for you, Maureen, but that's what I kind of heard.
That's okay. You, you interpreted that correctly.
So with the caveat that it is an estimate, it is not going to have the ability to make answers, we can ask if Lori feels comfortable producing something like that by Friday.
The challenge is, is the expectation on the board to present that alternate budget without the backup of you or Lori to help guide any of those questions. So that could be potentially, you know, misinforming people. If we don't, we can't answer the questions and things get kind of skewed where you can't correct it.
Well, Maureen's right.
That's like a concern of mine.
Well, it's going to be discussed regardless. And so you can discuss it in estimates based on information that has previously been discussed. But yes, you're right, Abby. You're not going to have preciseness.
So it's like misleading in my eyes of presenting something we haven't even reviewed as a board yet together. So that's just my, my take on it is, yes, there's numbers, but we, we haven't even had a chance to ask questions regarding those numbers. So to present that at a town meeting, I don't know if that's really reasonable.
But Maureen, it sounds like it's important to you that we do maybe have some sort of an estimate. And then if, if that's the case, then we would just have to say that, that this is, this was requested. This is what we, we know, but this could also all change. Um.
Lori's ready to comment.
Go, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, on my screen, I can't find my hand. I, I think, I think that I'm happy to provide the information. I think the challenge is that the weighting is also changing for fiscal year '25. And that's what, I mean, I can just do a 24 to 24, right? And keep it all the same. I think maybe what, you know, could potentially become very confusing is projecting out. So, which is what I did for you previously. So if you just want the 24 to 24, this is what it looks like. This, this is the difference in the tax rate without the new weights coming in, then I can do that pretty easily.
But it wouldn't, that's not.
Everything changes. Everything changes next year.
But also with the, with the change in the weights, that isn't set yet, right? So it's.
Uh, no, it's set. It's set. And that's, that's what I went to a training on, so.
It just does not kick in till FY '25.
Right, right. So you're, so you're making decisions before things change. That's all.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying. But I'm happy to do the 24 to 24 comparison. This year, you know, one tuitioning, one, uh, operating. That's fine.
I wanted to ask Bill, how is the applications coming along for hiring teachers to fill the positions?
Uh, they have been posted and we are receiving applications. But until the budget occurs, until the board decides on their, um, pathway for the receiving of the petition, their correspondence with their attorney, and their decision about, uh, whether they are going to warn a vote within the 60 days of receiving it on April 10th, there really is no action to occur until those things happen.
Thank you. So I don't, I, I, Maureen, I want to, I guess, oh, gosh, I don't know. I, I feel like, Maureen, this is a request that you made as a community member and, and I, I feel like that's fair. Just as long as, if we're at town meeting, you, you back us up on this as far as not truly knowing. Obviously, Lori hates to, you know, give you more work right before Friday, but, um, you know, it's, it is important to me to hear what people want and what they think. So, um, Russ, Abby, either of you?
The, the way Lori presented the budgets at the last meeting or two meetings ago, I think there were three of them, in fact, side by side by side. I think that's what she's suggesting now to do with the two budgets. Obviously, as, as Bill pointed out, if the budget passes right now as is, whether we vote to close the school or not has no effect on this budget. But I think, I just think it would be helpful, um, as an estimate. I understand that, that word is in there, uh, to see the budget and the tax rate.
Great. Um, so, uh, Bill, do we need to make an official request? Or am I just, are you asking Lori right now to please do that?
I think you can just ask Lori right now to please do that. As long as Lori understands what it is, you're, she's being asked.
Lori, do you understand? Oh, God, I, this is, sounds silly coming from me. Do you understand what's being asked?
You're muted, Lori.
What I would, what I understand is the board would like me to have this budget, which is in your town meeting book, and then a 24 budget, non-operational, as a comparison with the tax rate.
Yep. Does that sound good to you, Maureen?
It does. And you guys have it. Don't worry. You're going to be able to present it just fine.
Okay. Thank you, Lori, if you're willing to do that.
That's no problem at all.
Great.
I can get that done for you. But I would like to know, where is the best place to send it so that it is broadcast out and available to have at town meeting?
Um, I think just, uh, the whole board, uh, Bridget Corby, um, does that work and Ellen?
To print it out or to like email it out?
I think just so you have it and, um, oh, you're saying to print it out?
Send it to the town clerk and it'll be distributed.
Yeah, Ellen McDuffie.
Okay, so if I send it to, uh, the board and Ellen Mc. Okay, so if I send it to the board and Ellen McDuffie, then everybody will have it. Okay. Very good.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen.
Beth, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, of course.
Laura, you said comparing the two budgets with the effect on the tax rate. And if the effect on the tax rate is something like 2.17 compared with 1.98, I don't feel like that's very helpful. I think it should say, if your home's worth $300,000, just pick a number, then the difference on your tax bill would be $14.
I'm happy to provide that. The challenge with that is that so many people pay on income.
Right.
Particularly in the town of Wyndham, to be honest. That as long as everybody understands that this estimate that I'm creating a tax rate for and then, you know, using a house value is what the homeowner that is paying full boat pays.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Can I ask, John, what town do you live in?
I live in Jamaica.
That's what I thought.
Is that relevant?
Well, yeah.
You don't pay the tax here in Wyndham.
No, I don't pay the tax.
You're not on the voter list.
No, I'm not. I'm interested in the Wyndham Elementary School.
I can appreciate that.
All right.
Yes, Jim?
I sort of feel like what John suggested maybe is a little too confusing. And I would say if she can just give the two tax rates, people can figure out their own taxes, I think. Or they can see, okay, if it's gonna be less, if it's gonna be a lower tax rate for keeping the school open than to close it, people need to know that, I think, because it's important to people. But somehow it seems like it would be asking people a lot to say, okay, if my house is worth this much, you know. That's just my feeling about it, but I don't know.
Laurie, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'll jump in. So the request of the board, as it currently stands, is simply the estimated budget. The new request to add to that from the audience is for Laurie to do something additional. We have not been directed to do that by the board as of yet.
Okay. So Ginny, you're feeling like what we have right now is gonna suffice?
I think that's fine. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think that's the way it should be. And people, you know, the discussion can go on during town meeting. But as you said, nobody can really tell exactly what it's gonna be. So it can't be a full discussion.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Great. All right. John, are you okay with that? Yeah. Great. Anybody else for Laurie? So we're sticking with our original plan, Laurie. Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Laurie? Otherwise, I think she's gotta go.
Unless you have any questions on pay orders, then she can roll.
I talked to Terry Fletcher this morning, and I clarified that I have what I signed at the town office. I have the, what's just payroll, and then I have what are our vendors. I have those right here. So I went over there. It sounds like there was some confusion about Pay Order 35. I clarified that with her. So, let's see. Laurie, what do you call, we have payroll and then the ones with all of our vendors. She had a name for it. What?
The vouchers. AP vouchers.
Yes. So no, I coordinated with her. I have the vouchers. I have the payroll. So no, I have it printed out. Actually, there's a copy for you. There's another copy. So I have them. So I don't. Thank you. Terry was very helpful.
I do have a question, Laurie.
Okay.
On page 45, it's the budget summary for the last fiscal year. And it shows that the local school district cost per student, which is Wyndham, is $19,989.72. And the Wyndham, the West River UED is $26,261. So what I would like other board members in the community to understand is that the school tax for the town of Wyndham is dependent upon also what the per pupil cost is in the West River District. And because we send about 37% of our students to the West River District, we have to assume a percentage of their budget cost per student into our budget. And that if there was another district such as, you know, Taconic and Green that has an average cost of $20,859, our actual tax rate would go down because we were associated with a district that had a lower per pupil cost than what the West River District has. This is a nuance in understanding how the budget rate and the tax rate is calculated. And I don't think everyone who is here truly understands the mathematics behind it.
Where's Taconic and Green?
Ludbrook. Just down the road. Okay, it's another district.
I didn't know they were called Taconic and Green.
Well, that's their district. But the point I'm trying to make is, being on the school board, you need to understand how the tax rate is calculated. And when you're in a district like ours where our students go to one school and the rest of the students go to another school, you need to understand the tax rates in the towns that are around you so that you can look at this and say, well, gee, maybe if we were to associate ourselves with another district, our taxes would actually go down and the kids could possibly have a better education opportunity. But I don't think anyone pays attention to these detail sheets. And this is the summary that Laurie sent us and the, or Terry sent us out. And I think it's an important document for us as board members to understand. It's just an education.
So what does this have to do with Pay Order 35? I'm confused.
Because it's included. We paid $24,679 out in the pay orders.
Okay.
I mean, I read them. When they come in, I read every page.
It's the students that go down there.
Here's, yeah, here's the numbers right here on this sheet.
It's our town students that go to their school.
Go to the older school.
So Russ, and Bill, forgive me. Forgive me if I'm wrong here, but again, I'm gonna bring up, and I'm not trying to beat a dead horse here, but for $750 a year, I'm supposed to understand the tax rates and I'm a farmer. I work on a farm. My job is to produce a budget by the professional of Laurie Garland. Believe me, if I knew what Laurie Garland does, I would be making a lot more money. No offense. I mean, you deserve it. Or Bill. That's not our job, Russ. Our job is to promote, to put out a budget. That's it. And allow the townspeople to choose. It's to put out policies that come down from the superintendent. That is it. I just, I don't understand. Any other questions for Laurie? I don't want to hold Laurie up unless, Laurie, you have something to say about that.
Note that Russ is correct. The tax rate is comprised of two different, an elementary and a secondary. And that's all on that summary sheet. So I think it's fairly easily laid out on that summary sheet in your budget.
And the secondary students, sorry, the secondary students are our Wyndham students that are going.
Yes.
And where else would they go? We don't have a high school. I mean, so that's, yeah, that's what we're doing. Okay, I'm just, yeah. Anybody else for Lauren? Anybody on Zoom? No? All right, because if that's the case...
No questions on Zoom.
All right, if that's the case, then Laurie, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes. And we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, Laurie. Hey, look for my document coming out, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, I have to stop sharing.
All right, Beth, then I think we're at the moment where you have declared the informational meeting over, and you can go into your regular meeting of public comment.
All right, moving into public comment at 6:41. Anybody that wants to share? Nobody?
I do not have any hands in Zoom.
Crystal, we do here.
So I would like to ask about the WCSU district equity policy. I've highlighted a couple things here. Equity means that every school provides and every student has access to high-quality, culturally responsive curriculum programs, teachers and administrators, extracurricular activities, and support services to meet the needs of each and every student. So I'd like to know how many support staff Wyndham has?
For individual education plans, or are you, that's...
How many support staff does Wyndham have? Not for IEPs, not for 504s. How many support staff does Wyndham have?
Are you talking about like Carla West coming, or anybody? I don't really know. Bill?
Wyndham participates in fractional participation of support staff for counseling and music and PE.
Art.
Because it, you know, if you don't have enough students or enough classes, you don't want to have a full-time teacher. And so I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that fractional part is, but Wyndham does provide those support staff services in those disciplines.
And how many support staff does Townsend have, Bill?
Again, off the top of my head, I wouldn't know. But because they have a population that I believe is in the mid-80s, they are going to staff the school to fit the needs of 80 students, just like a school that had 400 students would staff it, or a school that had 15 would staff it appropriately. But I apologize, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Russ, you had it, didn't you?
According to the Townsend website for their school, they have nine support staff.
Okay. For 80 students?
For 80 students.
And as part of this district equity policy, would the students and parents be crazy to think they'd have licensed teachers? Wouldn't that be part of our equity policy?
Are you talking about for when we hire for next year? Yeah, obviously we're hiring, yeah, teachers.
Did you bring that? Because I don't think that's a nice stuff.
No, I brought this.
Yeah. Because I don't have that.
Do you want to tell them what you have?
Well, it's...
Point of order. Point of order. If this is time for public comment, it's not a discussion. It was an unwarranted meeting.
Oh, that's true. Sorry, Michael. Thank you. Did you have anything else?
I thought we were on a public comment. So public comment isn't up for discussion. So she can make her comment.
Because we don't...
And then you can make a comment, but it's not to be discussed because it's not warned.
Okay, but I don't think you know what she has in her hand.
Okay. So share your public, you can continue with your comment. How's that?
So is this equity policy currently in effect?
So again, I would just refer to the reality that it is public comment. So your question is the comment. And if you would like the board to warn that on a future agenda and then respond to that, that would be the appropriate action. Does that make sense?
So warn the equity policy question?
Well, I believe the question was, is the equity policy in effect? I would double-check that with Crystal, but I believe that is the question.
Yeah, for Wyndham. Okay.
So aside from asking that question, is there, and that we would talk about it at the next meeting, is there more that you would like to share in your comment?
I want to know what happens if you are not in line with your equity policy.
Okay.
I will make a note. Put that on your next agenda.
Thank you, Bill.
Any other public comment? Nothing in the room, not on Zoom? Okay, we're gonna move on to correspondence. I don't know if there's more to talk about the correspondence. I think, Crystal, this was regarding the cell phone. I'm just making sure that that's all set.
No, it wasn't technically about cell phones.
Sorry, it just says cellphone use.
Apparently, our students are playing a video game in school called Roblox, which has chat rooms, which there's supposed to be 14 to play this game. So our students, while they're playing this game, are available to predators. I was a little mind-blown thinking they could play this on their Chromebooks. So I just assumed they had cell phones here. But no, it was on their Chromebooks. So...
And was this a...
First of all, I'd like to know how the heck this happens. And second of all, I'd like an update that IT has been in here and scrubbed the Chromebooks. Because I don't give my kids access to that stuff. And it's one thing if they're seeing somebody outside the school do it and they're bugging me, I want this game, I want this game. But when they were coming to school and playing a game, I'm pretty sure the oldest kid we have here is 11, and I think that's even shooting high. And this game is for 14 olds.
Board, I will check in with the school and report back to the board on this game, Roblox, being on student Chromebooks.
Okay. Great, Bill. Thank you. And that's also, if there is, could we be proactive in making sure that if there's concerns about them being, the Chromebooks getting scrubbed, that that gets addressed as well?
Oh, yes. I won't wait for the board to, I will inform the board of my inquiry and my action.
Thank you.
Great. I had a correspondence from a gentleman in town regarding the posting of the meeting that I wanted to discuss, or just not even discuss, there's no discussion. I am required by law to post in three places, and I have posted, for my time that I've been posting as chair, the school, Bridget helps me with that because Bill sends the agenda to Bridget. It's at the town office and it is at the meeting house. And I did speak to people in town who have participated in the board, and it has not been posted at the Firehouse for years. If the Firehouse would like for me to post that there, I would be more than happy. It's certainly an easy shot for me, right up the road. I too have a life and am busy. But I appreciate the Firehouse. I have the utmost respect for them. And if they would like it posted there, I am more than happy to do that. But I will not ever listen to anybody tell me that I am hiding information about the informational meeting. And other than that, there will be no discussion about this. So rest assured, I've done my job. I've talked to Bill. He reassured me that not only am I doing what I'm supposed to be doing, but quite frankly, it sounds like I might be doing more than I need because one of the places that it can be posted, am I correct in this, Bill, is central office.
Which we do always as well. So we go beyond the legal requirement.
It's posted in four places. So I found it very offensive to hear from a community member that I was hiding information. I have worked on this board for 16 years, and that is not what I'm about. I have worked on this board for 16 years, and that is not what I'm about. And what bothers me, what scares me, in this small town that we have, that kind of rhetoric is exactly what keeps us divided as a town. It is exactly what keeps us divided as a nation. And it starts small. Just like cleaning up your own backyard is so important, this is important, not to share misinformation. And I would expect from my board members to have my back. That's it on that. Any other correspondence?
I do not have any.
Hearing none. Old business, approval of minutes.
Did everybody get minutes?
Yes. Did you...
Bill, have you seen the minutes?
I have not seen the minutes. Have you sent them to me?
Yes. And Meg?
Meg has not seen the minutes, I have not seen the minutes. What email are you sending them to?
Well, I don't have the email in front of me, but what's... I've received correspondence from, so... Nothing out of me, copies with me. But nobody's seen them. So Russ, have you seen them?
No, I haven't. I've looked at the WCSU website, and I've looked on the town website, and I haven't seen any at all.
I have a copy of one. What was this one?
So Abby, my email is W A N T O N at WyndhamCentral.org. And Meg Wright, who's my administrative assistant and who posts all minutes, is M W R I G H T at WyndhamCentral.org. If you send those minutes to us, we will post them within 24 hours.
You got it. I will get that sent out, and if there's issues or something going on, I can print them out and deliver them. So...
Thank you. That would be great.
Beth?
Yes.
I just want to point out, when you go onto the WCSU website, and you click on Wyndham District, you get a 404 error.
For months. I'm so... I have no idea. I don't control the Wyndham... You're saying the Wyndham what?
When you go to the WCSU website.
So that's addressed to Bill then? Yeah, that's not mine?
Oh, no, no. I need to know that.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. That's going to Bill. No, I'm just saying, I'm not... I'm a proud computer-not-good person, so...
Okay, I am on the website right now. There is no 404. It is WyndhamCentral.org. You click on Boards, the Wyndham Minutes, Agendas, Reports, since 2011 are all right there. So if you're having a tech problem, please reach out to me, and I'll send you the link.
Yeah, no, that's okay. All right. Okay, so moving on to pay orders. I gave you each a sheet, pay orders 29, I believe, through 35. As I confirmed with Terry today, you have pay orders 29... Just to make this easy. 29, 32, and 35 are our vouchers, which nothing stood out to me as any different than any other time. The other pay orders are all payroll.
Well, I moved to approve pay orders 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, and 35.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Thank you very much. I... Okay, update on attorney consultation.
So June 6th, but I learned that there was a... Which is a Tuesday. That's also, I think, the spring concert's the same day. So if you're available, or Russ, if you're available for the 7th, Wednesday, you can also do Wednesday the 7th.
At what time?
6:00.
Oh, that's right.
What is this meeting on the 6th for?
The consultation with the attorney.
Have you spoken to the attorney yet?
Yes.
And when did you speak? When did you talk to the attorney?
I don't know the specific date off the top of my head.
Did he offer you an engagement agreement or a letter establishing his rate, his hourly rate?
No.
He did not? Okay. So this is going to be a discussion with the attorney, and we don't have to pay for it?
Correct.
This is a freebie?
Correct.
Okay, and he understands that?
Yes.
Okay. Satisfies me.
So... Well, you can't be here the 6th, obviously, the kids are in a...
I... It's the... Yeah, I mean, it would be...
Sure.
However, it's a special meeting that would essentially, most likely, be primarily an executive session.
Okay. On Zoom or here, or...
We can either work. It doesn't... He's willing to come here if we want to do it in person.
I'm happy to do... Are you available for the 7th, Russ?
I won't be on the board then.
Okay. So the 7th...
I'm not running for reelection.
Okay. So yeah, the 7th works.
That's Wednesday, so it'll be the night after.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Great.
So just a couple points. You guys are going to need to warn that, right? So Abby, if you confirm with the attorney and give me the date and time, I can create a warning for you to be at Wyndham School.
And then I'll need to post that?
And then you'll need to post it in a minimum of three places. And then whatever you discuss with the attorney, you just have to remember that on April 10th, your town clerk received the petition. So if you are going to act on that petition, it must be done before June 10th.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Great.
Great. New business, the PCP, PCB discussion, Bill?
Yes. So PCBs are being tested around the state in 296 school buildings. And under current law, 20% of the cost of any remediation or mitigation is borne by the school district. And the executive committee, which is the chairs of all the boards, met to receive our attorney, Pietro Lynn and Lynn from Burlington, which is an attorney we have used many times, most recently in a Juul lawsuit, where the WCSU is going to receive $68,000 from a contingency lawsuit. Offered our district along...
I think so.
Juul, the vaping, yes.
Okay, sorry.
We signed on to that about six years ago, and we're going to receive about $68,000 in September for the WCSU board to use towards prevention of vaping. A similar contingency agreement is being arranged with a law firm to try to claw back that 20% that each school district may or may not have to do. It costs no upfront money. And all the school districts in Wyndham County, along with WCSU, are participating. I have, on behalf of Wyndham, agreed to allow Wyndham to be a part of that. So I need the board to either tell me to alert the attorneys to get Wyndham out, or to affirm that Wyndham can be a part.
Okay. So this is still the PCBs, or is this... I got lost on this.
This is PCBs. So when Wyndham gets eventually tested, you're going to be responsible for 20% of all the costs of whatever it takes. And this participation in this contingency lawsuit would allow you an opportunity at no fee to Wyndham or its taxpayers to receive some remuneration if successful.
But we'd be on the hook for 20%?
You're on the hook for 20% via Vermont law.
Okay.
If you are a party to this contingency lawsuit, you might be able to claw that back. So I need you to either say, "Bill, we want you to get us out of this," or "Bill, we affirm that we are part of it."
So we're... But everyone's required to get tested for no fee?
Yes.
Right? So we don't even know if we're a part of it yet? Do we... Can we wait till we're tested to make that decision?
No, you have to make it tonight.
Well, that's odd.
Well, that's fine. You don't have to be a part of it. I'm just saying, today's the... This is the decision you need to make about whether you want to be a part of it. If you don't have any PCBs that come up, it's irrelevant. If you have PCBs that come up, 20% of the cost can be retrieved through this lawsuit.
Well, how do you know if you haven't? If you haven't been tested?
Yeah, so it's like...
Yeah.
It's like a mystery catch, rare. And they're having everyone decide prior to knowing if they even have a PCB?
Yes, only 6% have been tested in the state.
And did they have it?
Half of all the 6% have turned up positive.
Burlington High School is a prime example of it.
Yeah, and we're not in Burlington High School.
You do have a question from Michael Pelton in Zoom.
Sure. Hi, Michael.
If they sign on to the lawsuit and the lawsuit fails, are there any fees associated?
No fees at all.
So essentially, there's no cost regardless, is what you're saying? Is that what you're saying, Bill?
That is exactly what I'm saying.
Unless we decide to not buy in and then discover something, of which case, it's not 20% of the cost, it's the full cost.
No, you're going to pay 20% no matter what. It's just whether the lawsuit is successful, and you get to have some of that 20% back.
Yeah, so there is a cost.
No, but it's not a cost from the lawsuit, it's a cost from Vermont.
Very confusing.
Yeah.
It's prudent to participate.
It costs the district nothing. It provides insurance in case you have to spend money. And as Michael just pointed out or asked the very precise question, you don't have to pay any money whether it's successful or not.
Okay.
So there's no harm in doing it versus...
It's prudent to do it.
Makes sense.
So what I need is a motion to affirm Wyndham School District inclusion in the PCB contingency law action.
So moved. Russ moved it, I seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you, Bill.
I've got a couple more new business things.
Okay.
I forgot to add them at the beginning.
That's all right, I have two also.
Okay, good. So as you know, we are in a transition phase in the final weeks of Wyndham School District operations. And I just wanted to inform the board of the actions that I have taken as superintendent, and the costs associated with that. So I have engaged a academic support teacher to write lesson plans for the final five weeks of school for our instructor in our upper grades class to deliver. I have hired a teacher for that class for the final 25, 28 days of school. And I have engaged coaching and support from a prior teacher on an ad-needed basis. That number is encumbered to around $12,000. May not cost that amount. But in order for our students at Wyndham for the final six weeks to have high-quality education delivered in a environment that is safe, secure, and supported, that decision was absolutely necessary. And that money will come out of your $57,000 in surplus that exists after your $30,000 inclusion towards the budget. So I just wanted to make that public and be forward. I also want to praise our two employees at Wyndham Elementary School, as the students refer to them, Ms. Natalie and Ms. Bridgette, have been going above and beyond, coming in early, staying in late, giving up their planning time, rearranging schedules, communicating with parents, reaching out to myself, IT, academic support, counseling support, to ensure that the final six weeks of school are the safest, smoothest, and most productive under the unique circumstances that Wyndham finds themselves. I could not be more proud of the two employees that are going way above and beyond for the Wyndham community and Wyndham students. I know we find ourselves in a unique situation, but the dedication that those two employees are giving just cannot be celebrated enough.
Thank you.
Bridgette, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Bridgette.
You have a comment from Maureen Bell on the Zoom?
Yep.
Hi. Thanks. Bravo to you ladies for doing that. That's great. Does the former teaching principal, is he still on the payroll?
I am not allowed to comment on any employee who may or may not be availing themselves of any federally protected leave opportunities.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Bill?
I do. If perchance, the budget does not pass on the 20th, it would be prudent for the board, since Russ is not running for Abigail and for Beth, to consider a special meeting that would be necessary if the budget does not pass. Because what would need to happen is you need to have a special meeting, you need to then prepare a different budget, you then need to warn a different budget, you need to warn it for 30 to 40 days, and you need to have an informational meeting. So...
Since we're already doing a meeting on the 7th, if after-town meeting, that's the thing, could we just add that to the agenda and make it that meeting day?
Yes, you could.
All right, great.
That would work absolutely time-wise just fine.
Perfect.
Great.
So if necessary, that we will add that to that day's agenda. Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Thank you.
I just have two quick things. One, obviously, I just... I think we've all seen the email regarding the BCTV, and obviously, my assumption is the board, the school, will pay our portion of that recording. I contacted the chair of the select board in an email, so I don't think there's anything much to discuss. I think that's obviously part of our meeting. The last thing is, and this is... I had Michael Longo, who's a tree specialist, go by the school because I noticed that maple, and I'm not a tree person. The kids are probably better at me for identifying trees, but that tree out front looks a little sketchy. And he did come by and said, yes, that, and I think a couple birches? I can't remember what he said, next to it. So it's just something I'd like to add to the next agenda, is how we need to handle that. So I'm just throwing it out there. I'm looking at you, Bridgette, here.
And the maintenance? I don't know, do we ever bid for the maintenance? Is that always for the yard, like lawn stuff?
Oh, I don't know.
How to improve communication with whoever?
Yeah, but we can maybe add that to the next agenda?
Yeah.
Great. All right. Anything else from anybody?
Yes. I would just like to say, from a personal standpoint, just hearing now for the first time that Russ is not going to be running, I want to thank him for his three years of service. And it is obvious to me that his dedication to the community, while may differ in opinion from members of the community, has always been centrally located in the idea of being a part of a community, communicating out, being very interested in the finances, being very interested in getting opinions out there. And that is very challenging in a small-world democracy. And I just wanted to say that I think that takes courage, and I do appreciate the service.
There you go, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, unless there's anything else, motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Yep.
7... Whatever.
7/11.
7/11. Thank you very much.